Role call please Clerk Goodsell.
West.
Present.
Marble.
Present.
Wardinger.
Dale.
Becky.
Present.
Lemon.
Here.
Rodriguez.
She is not here Carol is here though.
Yep, I did hear Carol's response.
Thank you, Eanna. Next we'll move to approval of the agenda. Clerk Goodsell, were you reconsidering D on consent agenda, the 365 software package?
That would be for Sarah to comment on, I'm not sure where she was in that process. With the Office 365 purchase.
I'm sorry, okay.
If you would, let's remove that from consent, please. We'll consider that another time.
Okay, that would be a motion to remove that from consent. In addition, we will be adding review, first read of the updated DDA ordinance, recodification of TIF, that will go number 15 please. Just above the DPW report. So there are two changes to the agenda. Floor would be open for a motion to process those. Or would be open for a motion to add DDA ordinance revision as number 15 and to remove D from consent agenda Office 365 software purchase. Again, floor would be open for a motion.
I make a motion to remove consent agenda for D, the Office 365 software purchase and to add number 15, the DDA and TIF ordinance update of the agenda.
We have a motion to be of support.
I support.
A motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, motion passes and the agenda is so amended. That being said, we'll move on to consent agenda. So any discussion or questions on anything on consent agenda?
We have a mistake on our regular meeting minutes for January the 4th, 2021. Agreement motion by Polowski, he wasn't there.
You're absolutely right.
Any other discussion on consent agenda questions? You'll see that the Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Department report is for December. Some of our meetings, they don't run those numbers till the first of the following month. So we may be just a month behind on those reports, but you will, all council will be receiving those. But the delay is simply from when the process, the reports are processed and when we actually got them.
I have a quick question on the police report and this is just, you know, bear with me, it's an education process for myself. What's the difference between citizen initiated and officer initiated? Any idea?
My, unless, is there someone from the Sheriff's Department with us this evening? I don't see that there is. Citizen initiated would be a call to the department. Officer initiated would certainly be that our officer saw something and initiated contact.
Jeff Christensen is from, yes. They are, he's joining right now, I believe.
Perfect. Great question for Jeff Dale.
Looks muted. Jeff, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry, I had trouble logging on. I couldn't get it on, couldn't get it to come up. So I'm here now and I did not, if there was a question, I did not hear it.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome Captain Christensen. Yes, trustee Harmon, would you go right ahead?
Yeah, I'm just curious what the difference is between a citizen initiated and officer initiated.
Sure, that's a good question. The citizen initiated would be calls that come in through dispatch and someone requests some kind of service or asks for an officer to come. The officer initiated would be something that the officer does while on patrol. You'll see a lot of those are traffic stops where the officer initiates a traffic stop or directed patrols where they concentrate on a specific area, often as a result of complaints or troubled areas for speeders or other things during the summer, or not during the summer, during the fall, we did a directed patrol around the buses and the bus stops to watch for violators passing the buses when they had their stop signs on and we do various things like that. Other things would be property checks where the officer just checks properties that they either know, either that are closed and just need some extra attention or for some other reason, sometimes they request.
And just a quick follow-up on that if I could, please. Can I assume that all 180 of these requests be either citizen or officer initiated? We're within the one hour, I'm sorry, one mile radius of the city of Galesburg. Because I know sometimes when we had a police department, they would assist Richland or would assist Kalamazoo County or something like that. Were all these in response to the city of Galesburg?
They would, the way that particular report, and I don't know if you're looking at the year end, you should have December.
I'm looking at December 2020, I'm sorry.
Okay, yep. All of those calls would have been within the jurisdiction of Galesburg. Unless it says assist other jurisdiction, it would all be within the city limits of Galesburg. That's the way the reports run.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other discussion or questions on consent agenda? If there is no other discussion, floor would be open for motion to pass, accept consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
We have motion in support. We have motion in support, role call please Clerk Goodsell.
Rodriguez. Rodriguez.
She's here now, so.
Yeah, she's, I'll get back to her, she's mute right now. Lemon?
Here, yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Wardinger?
She's mute right now.
Marble?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Rodriguez. Angelina, you'll have to unmute yourself. And Carol, you'll need to unmute yourself also at star six.
I asked to unmute, so I'm just kind of waiting.
Angelina, I'm doing role call for consent agenda.
Angelina, are you there?
She's muted again.
If you have any questions, you can call me. I assume we can't just skip her?
Carol, could you unmute yourself, please?
It's star six if you're on the phone.
Clerk Goodsell, how many votes do we have?
We have five.
Thank you. Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to the city manager report, number five, please. Sarah?
Good evening. You have my report. It starts off with the financial update. So after my report, Siegfried Crandall will present the audit, the annual audit that was conducted. Next month, we will be able to present to you some budget adjustments. And then following that in April, as the charter calls for, we will present to you draft budget for passage by June 1st. So we're right on track with our schedule for budgeting and auditing. Prior to presenting that draft budget though, April 1st, we would request that council clarify some priorities so that we know how to budget and we make sure that we're really putting the dollars where the priorities are. And specifically, the preparations that I'm making, absent those priorities, have been to address some of the deferred maintenance of city buildings and streets and sidewalks. But of course, those projects are certainly contingent upon learning of your priorities. So that's the direction I'm headed, but certainly that's where we land is up to you. As far as a properties update, at 81 East Michigan, the property owner did request a meeting with myself, the building inspector and the zoning administrator, so that we could all gain clarity on exactly what the next steps were needed in order to qualify for the necessary permits. And I do believe that we left that meeting all in complete agreement about the next steps needed. And I misstated last month when I indicated that fines were accruing. There's been no citation on that property, so that was incorrect and I want to correct that. The building that does have fines accruing is 23 East Battle Creek Street. Those fines are accruing at approximately $750 per month. It's a daily fine, so that is dependent on the number of days in a month. Because they're out of compliance with the February 21st court order, so that's been nearly a year that they're out of compliance with that order. So they will be up for tax foreclosure if they don't pay those fees in addition to the tax bill of $3,558. Moving down to the municipal separate stormwater system, I've been notified, actually my predecessor was notified in June that we were out of compliance in several areas of our license. And so I've been working to make up for that. The largest things that I can be doing right now are working with the Kalamazoo County Municipal Stormwater License Group on the public education piece, as well as working with Prime Newhoff to make sure that all of our plans and documentation is in order. So I've been working on that. Moving down into page two, we are planning a spring newsletter. And so I'd like to ask the help of council to come in and get your headshots or submit your headshots within the next week or two. If you don't have a headshot, please do plan to stop by City Hall and we can take something reasonably attractive for you.
Any other discussion on consent agenda, questions? You'll see that the Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Department report is for December. Some of our meetings, we, they don't run those numbers till the first of the following month. So we may be just a month behind on those reports, but you will, all council will, will be receiving those. But the delay is simply from when the process, the reports are processed and when we actually got them.
Well, I have a quick question on the, on the police report, and this is just, you know, bear with me. It's an education process for myself. What's the difference between a citizen initiated and officer initiated? Any idea?
My, unless, is there someone from the sheriff's department with us this evening? I don't see that there is. Citizen initiated would be a call to the department. Officer initiated would certainly be that our officer saw something and initiated contact.
Jeff Christensen is from...
Yes.
They are, he's joining right now, I believe.
Perfect. Great question for Jeff Dale.
Looks muted. Jeff, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry, I had trouble logging on. I couldn't get it on, couldn't get it to come up. So I'm here now, and I did not, if there was a question, I did not hear it.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome, Captain Christensen. Yes, trustee Harmon, would you go right ahead?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious what the difference is between a citizen initiated and officer initiated?
Sure, that's a good question. The citizen initiated would be calls that come in through dispatch, and someone requests some kind of service or asks for an officer to come. The officer initiated would be something that the officer does while on patrol. You'll see a lot of those are traffic stops where the officer initiates a traffic stop or directed patrols where they, they concentrate on a specific area, often as a result of complaints or troubled areas for speeders or, or other things. During the summer, or not during the summer, during the fall, we did a directed patrol around the buses and the bus stops to watch for violators passing the buses when they had their stop signs on. And we do various things like that. Other things would be property checks where the officer just checks properties that they either know either that are closed and just need some extra attention or for some other reason, sometimes at request. Is that...
And just a, a quick follow-up on that, if I could, please. Can I assume that all 180 of these requests be either citizen or officer initiated? We're within the one hour, I'm sorry, one mile radius of the city of Galesburg? Because I know sometimes when we had a police department, they would assist Richland or would assist Kalamazoo County or something like that. Were all these in response to the city of Galesburg?
They would, the way that particular report, and I don't know if you're looking at the year end, you, you should have December...
I'm looking at December 2020. I'm sorry.
Okay, yep. All of those calls would have been within the jurisdiction of Galesburg. Unless it says assist other jurisdiction, it would, would all be within the city limits of Galesburg. That's the way the reports run.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other discussion or questions on consent agenda? If there is no other discussion, floor would be open for motion to pass the accept consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
We have motion and support. We have motion support. Roll call, please, Clerk Goodsell.
Rodriguez? Rodriguez?
She's here now, so...
Yeah, she's, I'll get back to her. She's mute right now. Lemon?
Here, yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Wardinger? She's mute right now. Marble?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Angelina, you'll have to unmute yourself. And Carol, you'll need to unmute yourself also at star six.
I asked to unmute, so I'm just kind of waiting on them.
Okay, Angelina, I'm doing roll call for consent agenda.
Angelina, are you there?
She's muted again.
If you have any questions, you can call me. I assume we can't just skip her?
Carol, could you unmute yourself, please?
It's star six if you're on the phone.
Clerk Goodsell, how many votes do we have?
We have five.
Thank you. Consent agenda passes. Move on to the city manager report, number five, please. Sarah?
Good evening. You have my report. It starts off with the financial update. So after my report, Siegfried Crandall will present the audit, the annual audit that was conducted. Next month, we will be able to present to you some budget adjustments. And then following that in April, as the charter calls for, we will present to you a draft budget for passage by June 1st. So we're right on track with our schedule for budgeting and auditing. Prior to presenting that draft budget, though, April 1st, we would request that council clarify some priorities so that we know how to budget and we make sure that we're really putting the dollars where the priorities are. And specifically, the preparations that I'm making, absent those priorities, have been to address some of the deferred maintenance of city buildings and streets and sidewalks. But of course, those projects are certainly contingent upon learning of your priorities. So that's the direction I'm headed, but certainly that's where we land is up to you. As far as a properties update, at 81 East Michigan, the property owner did request a meeting with myself, the building inspector and the zoning administrator, so that we could all gain clarity on exactly what the next steps were needed in order to qualify for the necessary permits. And I do believe that we left that meeting all in complete agreement about the next steps needed. And I misstated last month when I indicated that fines were accruing. There's been no citation on that property, so that was incorrect, and I want to correct that. The building that does have fines accruing is 23 East Battle Creek Street. Those fines are accruing at approximately $750 per month. It's a daily fine, so that is dependent on the number of days in a month because they're out of compliance with a February 21st court order. So that's been nearly a year that they're out of compliance with that order. So they will be up for tax foreclosure if they don't pay those fees in addition to the tax bill of $3,558. Moving down to the municipal separate stormwater system, I've been notified, actually, my predecessor was notified in June that we were out of compliance in several areas of our license. And so I've been working to make up for that. The largest things that I can be doing right now are working with the Kalamazoo County Municipal Stormwater License Group on the public education piece, as well as working with Prime Newhoff to make sure that all of our plans and documentation is in order. So I've been working on that. Moving down into page two, we are planning a spring newsletter. And so I'd like to ask the help of council to come in and get your headshots or submit your headshots within the next week or two. If you don't have a headshot, please do plan to stop by City Hall, and we can take something reasonably attractive for you. Also, if you would like to engage by means of submitting a small article or if you have ideas for topics that need to be included, we certainly welcome those. I did attend the Michigan Municipal Executive's Winter Institute last week, virtually, which is a great way to attend a conference, which maximizes your time. And the session that really caught my ear more than anything was entitled 13 Ways to Kill Your Community. And it was things like, don't engage youth, don't engage seniors, don't engage newcomers, don't paint. These are things that you can be doing to kill your community. And I think we can all take those lessons to some degree. Some of those things, and we don't do some of those things. And one thing that I took away from that, the next book that I'm going to read is called The Price of Government by David Osborne. And I would invite you to join me in reading that, if that interests you. That way, I think we could be on the same page about things, but it sounded like a really good book, the name of which came up in that conference. Then we have cemetery and, and physical records maintenance. We became aware that our cemetery records are not up to date and not in any, have not been historically kept in any kind of orderly manner. So that has become a big project that staff is working on to accurately identify which graves are occupied and by whom, and which parcels are still available to be sold and which are committed but not yet occupied. I understand that this is a very common problem in older cemeteries. And so it's nothing to be shocked by, but it is something to be cleaned up. We may need to bring some ordinance amendment requests forward in the coming months, too, just to make sure that we're doing right by our citizens and making sure that the people who are there are, continue to be well-respected. And lastly, there is a decrease, a significant decrease in the COVID numbers. And we're now, having been five times what the numbers were back in April, we're now back down to only twice what the numbers were in April. But staff felt comfortable opening the doors. We didn't make any big deal about it on the website. It's kind of a soft opening, but we did open the front door today. Masks required, of course, and visitors are limited to just that lobby area. So we had about a half a dozen visitors today, and I think that it went well. So we certainly still encourage members of the public to communicate with us in a distanced manner by phone, by email, by Dropbox. If you absolutely need to come in, though, the doors are, are open and staff is here to serve you. So I don't know at this point if there are any questions for me regarding my report. That's all I have for you.
Mayor West?
Yes.
I was just reviewing the agenda, and I inadvertently omitted citizens' comment.
Well, we should go to citizens' comment, then. Let's take a moment and do that.
Okay.
Do we have anybody in the waiting room, Matt?
I don't see anybody in the waiting room, but there is a number ending in 7781 with, that has their hand raised and with all the newer people with the names that I do not recognize. I do not know who is a citizen, so...
Is that Carol?
Yep, so we should be good there.
7781 is Carol.
Oh, I guess she left and came back. All right. I think we are fine unless any of the people you recognize within this chat. Brian says, was there an update on the midway?
Yes, there was an update on the midway in the city manager report.
Well, does anybody else have any other questions or anything like that?
Is this muted or is it not muted?
Okay, let's, let's get, let's, let's get through the city manager report, please. So any other questions? Let's wrap this up. Any other questions, comments about the city manager report, council? Okay, very good. Thank you so much, city manager Josie, for the very thorough reporting. Again, we've talked that we can't over-communicate these things, so I really appreciate that. Captain Christensen, if you'd like to take just a minute now, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I have another meeting I have to attend shortly, so I wanted a chance to just say a couple of things. The city manager mentioned about the COVID situation. Wanted a little update. We've been working with our emergency management office and helping with the vaccines at the Expo Center. I know several of your fire department had been in. I've, I saw them coming in, and it was great to get them in. We are now on the 1B category, and things are spreading out a little bit. The last Thursday and Friday, we got a lot of teachers from the area in and got their vaccines. And several of the hospitals in the area, or the hospitals in the area are now offering for the 1B category. We will continue with the vaccine clinics at the Expo Center this week, both Tuesday and Wednesday. And then there's other vaccine clinics throughout the community in helping with that. And I have one other thing of interest. The sheriff's department just entered a, an agreement to partner with the Integrated Services of Kalamazoo, which is a organization or a group of organizations that help people with substance abuse problems, particularly opioids and other drugs. And this is important for the community because we can now, the officers on the street can now offer immediate resources for someone they run into, whether it be someone that's in a crisis situation or a homeless person. And the Integrated Services of Kalamazoo will offer resources immediately and within 24 hours, offer them some help, including for the homeless, which I know the Comstock and Galesburg area have had some problems with. They can offer some immediate help. So we're hoping that we can use these services to help those that are in that situation right away. So that's what I have for today. Unless there's other questions, I'll probably exit this meeting to join my other one.
Great, thank you, captain, very much for sharing that. Any questions for Captain Christensen, council? Very good. Thank you, captain. All righty, with that, we are going to move on to our 2019, 2020 audit presentation. Josh Gabriel is here from Siegfried Crandall with us. Josh, I'm going to go ahead and turn it right over to you.
Okay, great. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Does everyone have a copy of the financial statements in front of them? Or would you like me to share my screen? Or would you just like me to talk through some things?
Should be on the website as well, so...
Okay.
I'd love to see your screen. I mean, I, I have it, but I'd love to see your screen.
Okay, I will. Is that all right? If I grab the screen right now for a minute?
Yeah. Do I need to give you access or anything, or?
Yes, it just says it's disabled from participants, so you might either have to...
You're not the spotlight, so I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
Good question. I am not actually sure how to do that, so...
I could just talk through it.
Yeah, let me Google that real quick.
Yep, now, I'll just start with basically, the, the report we give starts with the auditors' report. I'd just like to go through that, just to highlight some things. The first is management's responsibility, or the city's responsibility, is to present the financial, the financial statements. And as auditors, it's our responsibility to come in and express an opinion on those financial statements based on our procedures. And then the third thing in there is our opinion. We came in and we issued a unmodified opinion, which is the auditor's non-committal way of saying you passed the audit. So that's what got reported to the state this year. And then, after that, I'd like to just point out some of your financial statement highlights. We're auditors, so we like the numbers. So I'm going to jump all the way down to page 13. I don't know if you have it in paper. It'll be page 13, or if you're on Adobe.
You should be able to share your screen now.
Okay. Okay, so now I'm on the Siegfried Crandall's balance sheet, and this is page 13. So I guess I'd just like to point out, these are where you see your governmental funds. So your general fund, your major street, your local street. And then your non-major fund, which is your police fund. And then, like to point, you, at the end of the year, you had $582,000 in cash in general fund, 330 in major street, 270 in local street, 100,000 in major, for a total of 1.3 million in cash in the governmental funds. So that excludes your water and sewer fund. Those are presented differently. And then, most people are most interested in general fund. So at the end of the year, you had 670,000 unassigned fund balance. And that's basically the amount that the city has saved over all the years in their general fund that can be spent at the council's discretion. And then, down at the bottom here, you'll see we have your total fund balance, which is the 1.3 million. And then, the state has required us to show some full accrual items, so we have to show your capital assets that you bought over time, not of any debt. And then we include your internal service fund in here as well. So when we add those items, you see the 1.6 in capital assets, take away the 70,000 in debt, and then the fund balance of your internal service fund, your full accrual net position is actually 3.1 million for your governmental funds. Then going down to the next page, we, this shows your income and expenses for your governmental funds again. As you see, general fund had 530,000 in revenue, 415 in expenses, or an increase of 80,000 from last year. And then again, combined general fund, you have your 1.3 million in total fund balance. The next, I'd like to point out some things about your water and sewer fund. And then also, this is where you see the internal service fund again. Cash in the sewer fund, 770,000. Water fund, 820, for a total of almost 1.6 million in cash in your enterprise funds. Enterprise funds always show full accrual, so they always show the assets right on the face of the statement. That's why they're separate from the governmental funds. So the water and sewer fund are sitting on about 2.2 million in assets. So basically, the pipes in the ground and the plants to treat. Also, debt will be on the books here, so you can see current bonds payable, 1.3, long-term of 8.4. So just under $1 million in long-term debt, mostly bonds payable. And then, the income statement for the sewer and water funds, it operating revenues of 200,000 in sewer, almost 400,000 in water. Down here, you got your costs, 1.70, 240 in water. For an increase in the sewer fund of 30,000, increase in water fund of about 100,000. And this shows you your net position at the end of the year of almost 1 million and almost 2 million, respectively, in sewer and water. Then, the last thing that I want to point out will be the budget, budgetary comparison. The state requires is that we file this with the financial statements. So general fund budget, budgeted revenues of 533,000, actual revenues of 530. So your budget revenues were only 2,000 off. That's, that's quite good. We don't usually see it that close. Expenses the same way, 150,000 in governmental expenses. You spent 160. Public safety, budgeted 290, spent 170. Going down for a total of, you budgeted a decrease of 22,000 in general fund. In reality, fund balance went up 80,000 for a positive budget variance of 103,000 from budget versus actual. The same kind of thing happened in major street. Revenues were very close. You were under budget in expenses. See, budgeted a 70,000 increase, in reality, $100,000 increase in major street, local street, budgeted a $16,000 decrease, in reality, only $2,000 decrease. So all positive budget variances there. So as far as my planned talking, that's all I have. But if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Josh, this is Lori West. What, what are the state's recommendations for percentage of budget reserve?
The state will never come out and give you a number. MTA doesn't like to give a number. As a firm, we always like to go with the, kind of the Dave Ramsey approach, where you say four to, four to eight months worth of your expenditures is a safe number to have in a general fund fund balance. So for the, the city last year, you spent about 450,000. 50% of that is about 250,000 would be a, would be a safe fund balance. We work with a lot of townships. They like to be closer to a year, so they like to be 100%. Cities and villages usually run a little leaner and are probably closer to 25 to 40%. So I guess, as a rule, I would say whatever the council's comfortable with, but anywhere around 50% is, is pretty common from what we see.
Thank you. Council, other questions? Any discussion on the audit? Questions for Josh Gabriel, while he's with us? Okay, if we don't have any other questions, thank you so much for presenting this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to educate, educate ourselves a little bit about municipal finance, which can be a very deep hole. So I appreciated working with you this year through the audit system, and I very, very much appreciate you taking the time to present to us. So thank you very much for the work that you do, Josh. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, council?
Okay.
I just want to say thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Josh.
Yep, thank you.
And with that, we will move on then to number seven, our ordinance enforcement proposal presentations. City manager Josie, did you have an order for presentation, or are we?
I'm, I'm open. It doesn't matter to me whichever one you'd like to see first. We have both associated government services and SafeBill community development with us, so your choice.
Could we start with SafeBill, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor West. This is Kelly Lindsay, and I'm the account manager for Michigan, as well as Ohio, and also responsible for new business development in Michigan. I am your neighbor, living in East Leroy, just to happen to skip over. And I often work out of our Athens hub office. And with me tonight, I have Paul Featherston, who is our state operations manager, joining us, and also our director of Midwest operations, Glenn Lindsay. So thank you for the time that you're able to carve out for us tonight. May I ask, mayor, or, excuse me? Ms. Josie? Am I pronouncing that correct? I want to call you Sarah. We've had a couple of conversations. I just want to call you Sarah.
Certainly, please call me Sarah, but it is pronounced Josie. You're correct.
Thank you, thank you, village manager or city manager. I wanted to ask if you were able to present the proposal overview to all of the members? If everyone has that?
They have the proposal as part of their packets.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, wonderful. Thank you for doing that. And, well, a little bit about our company. We are presently in, operating in twenty-seven different states. And while that may not seem important to the one point three square mile of the city of Galesburg, it certainly lends itself to idea that we're a larger company with a small town feel. And certainly able to, in emergent situations, provide backup inspections and cover when, when there may not be an inspector. So, and I would say that we employ over a thousand people, not just, you know, Michigan, of course, but nationwide. And alone, we are typically co-located, which means we often are, our staff is embedded within a municipal hall. And that's for the larger cities such as Muskegon and Troy, Wicksum operation, Madison Heights as well. So we're throughout the east and west and central in Michigan. I'm so happy to hear that you were looking for services because we are providing the similar services for building department functions within several surrounding communities to Galesburg. So it would be easily serviced with our local inspectors. And manager Joshi, I wonder if you wanted me to go through the bullet points of the proposal at the top? Or if you wanted a platform for Q and A, how would you like to move forward?
I'll defer to Mayor West on that. I don't know what kind of time we've set aside for these. So mayor, what would you like?
Kelly, could you just go over your bullet points with us? I think that would be beneficial.
Yes, thank you. So the inspection services and plan review at ninety-five percent of municipal fee that the city would retain five percent of the permit fee for the building, the electrical, the mechanical plumbing function. And that five percent can help offset the city's costs for any administrative support that would be provided, such as paying a monthly invoice, which we would send at the end of every month. So that five percent can help offset that cost. Building official services and permit technician services are included in that percentage of fee. The state of Michigan says that, you know, each municipality, cities, villages, and townships within Michigan must provide their taxpayers with a building official and a building department. So those two pieces are covered in that percentage of fee. The zoning administrative services piece would encompass the processing of zoning permit applications, making sure that whomever is building something within your community is compliant with more ordinances that you've written. So we would receive a copy of those ordinances and we would enforce them as written. And we would, of course, issue the permits for those projects. We would also be available to answer zoning-related questions for, for the public, for your applicants, taxpayers, et cetera. Code enforcement services is kind of what brought us together initially, and that was the beginning of the discussion. And I mentioned a proactive and a reactive method to this type of enforcement. And sort of landed on that a reactive approach was better. I know that there are some properties that you'd like to have cleaned up, and we're adept at providing that type of property maintenance and code enforcement. But we also, the reactive piece is that one of you, a councilperson, treasurer, mayor West, whomever, would certainly provide to us the locations that you'd like us to enforce upon. We wouldn't just go out and find things. We would want to work with you as a partner to figure out what properties you're interested in having optics on, I would say, and getting enforcement or cleaned up. And the meetings, meetings and court time, that is something that would be requested by you, any one of your council members or yourself. Request that we attend a meeting or if there's a court involved with some type of case, we are available for that. The non-permitted activity is by request only, and that refers to inspections or re-inspections on properties for which the prior agency has already issued permits and has collected a fee on. We, we might intercede and, and be able to pick the ball up and inspect. It is typically required that the exiting agency close out those permits themselves. But we wanna make sure and cover you if in the event, those, some that are open-ended and have been open-ended forever. Certainly after hours in emergency inspection, self-explanatory permit fee. I understand that there's one in place now, but there were, it was mentioned made that it might be a little outdated. So we would wanna visit that and certainly mutually agree. So, and the bullet points at the bottom are just covering what, what, you know, what do you get for ninety, for, for the fee, right? What do you get? There's unseen benefits to, to partnering with us. And these are some of the expenses that we take on. And another thing to consider is the ebb and flow of the economy and the building. It's up and it's down. We take the, the, the hit on all of that. You don't. So whether it's, you've got developments going on or whether you don't, we're still providing. I understand there's a couple of significant portions of land that are zoned residential that you're hoping to develop. And I know that we would be equipped to help walk any developer through whatever questions they might have and, and sort of help them with that process. We're adept at that. So that covers the, the bullet pointed overview. I hope I didn't take too much of your time.
No, we appreciate you taking a little bit of time with us and helping us understand this. This is a new concept. So council, do you have any questions for Kelly or her team from Safe Built on this particular proposal?
I do, Kelly. You, you talked about at request only attending meetings. In your experience helping out other municipalities, do you, do you meet with the planning and zoning board quite often or not?
And they would, sure. Thank you, Councilwoman Marble. We would meet at your request. If there's a project going on or if they need some guidance or direction, we're certainly available for that. We, you know, walking into several different communities, there are levels of boards' experience. And we understand that. And so we lend our experience as needed. So I'm not sure where your board is at for ZBA or Planning Commission, but we certainly can handle walking them through whatever's on their plate as requested.
Thank you.
Yes.
I had a similar in that if you're doing planning and zoning administration, participating in planning and zoning meetings seems like that would go hand in hand. So. The other concern I have, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, with any sort of self-initiated proposal is that there is an identified mechanism within the city for prioritizing ordinance enforcement. We certainly know that we will have a high amount of reporting and hopefully that will plateau. But we will no longer engage in selective enforcement. Enforcement will be equitable across the board, and I think that council needs to have a plan to prioritize sections and or specific ordinances around safety and economic development. And that we need to give the office staff the tools they need to make those priorities and then refer. No council member or citizen should refer directly to one of your organizations. So I'm concerned about that, and I think that it's up to us to put that stopgap in place, if you will. So I'm not throwing that out there for my council as well. And council, do you have any other questions for Safe Built on the proposal that they've, that they've offered?
How often do you have inspectors in our area, southwestern Michigan?
So we are in your area five days a week for, say, electrical, mechanical, plumbing and building. Usually with a village or, excuse me, a city this size, we would typically do two to three days a week so that your contractors can count on certain day of the week. And we have, that's not to say if we have an emergency situation, families without heat, they need a permit for a furnace, for example. We certainly would make it a priority, whether it was on a given day that we were in the area or not. So we max village on a regular basis. So I, and we weren't really sure, Councilwoman Marble, about the volume. It was hard for me to gauge what, what type of activity, permitting activity that the, that the city has at this point. And so I think we'll have a better idea through our tracking, which you'll have full transparency to our, our software program. And you can sign on and, and see what activities happening. All of you can have that access as community leaders. So we don't really know the activity right now.
So we talked about inspectors, and I take it that so a code inspection officer is a different person than an inspector for the building and plumbing and electrical. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
So, go ahead.
No, thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So are they, or is there someone available in the area? Or do you need a couple of day leeway for, to, to come? Or how does that work?
So for code enforcement, that would be the enforcement of your local property maintenance ordinance. I'm imagining that, you know, when you're starting an enforcement program, Mayor West spoke to the across-the-board enforcement and coming up with a plan. And I've seen this success of communities put together, map your one point three miles, and then you put into a quadrant, quadrant one, two, three and four. And, and you aggressively go for that in the beginning, and then it ebbs off, like Mayor West said. So, so I would say that our presence would be more prevalent and needed in the opening of it and probably through the summer months, because we're kind of snow-covered right now a little bit. So it's difficult for that code enforcement piece. We can't always see everything we need to see. And then as far as the inspections go, we have a twenty-four-hour inspection scheduling line. So if you have a contractor who is, he, you know, he's the one-man operation. He's bidding the job, he's doing the work, he's doing the material runs. And at eleven o'clock at night, he forgot, realizes that he forgot to call for an inspection. He can call at eleven o'clock at night. We'll get that inspection request and we'll be able to come and perform the inspection the following business day. So that's great. And they can call up to seven AM on that hotline, and we can be there the same day as well. So, does that answer the question, Councilwoman Marble? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion from council? Okay, thank you, Kelly, so much for coming and, and putting this together for us. We very much appreciate that, and we're, we're excited to start moving forward. So if there are no other questions.
Thank you, you guessed. Thank you, council. Yes.
Very good. Okay. We now have a proposal. Hello, Mr. Gale, from Associated Government Services. Council, you should have a draft agreement and a presentation as well. So I'll go over, if you're the one, I'll go ahead and hand it over to you. Okay?
Thank you. Yep, I'm, I am Bert Gale, and I'm the president of Associated Government Services. Can you guys hear me okay? I got a little background noise here.
Yep, I can, so.
Okay, good. Associated Government Services was formed back in nineteen eighty-nine to perform these types of services and more. We've, quite frankly, serviced little, small villages, cities, larger cities, and then full counties. So we understand the full gamut of how government works in each one of those, because each one of those do have their own little nuances as, as to how they operate. So, and I've been with this company since it opened its doors. I was not the owner then, in them days. But I, I came to work for this company when they opened the doors as a part-time inspector. And in nineteen ninety-three, I became the full-time inspector with this company. And in fact, nineteen ninety-three, I actually put together the Village of Pawpaw's Property Maintenance Code Program from the registration process through the inspection process and the reporting. And in some cases, going to court for those processes back in nineteen ninety-three. So I, this, none of this is real new to me. It's kind of an everyday thing. I will tell you the most things I've seen. But every once in a while, something will walk through the door that's like, huh, there's a new one after this many years. So we perform zoning administration, code administer, code enforcement. We call it ordinance enforcement in our office. And then building, plumbing, mechanical and electrical code administration and enforcement as well. We're located in Richland, Michigan, which isn't too far from you. And we already take care of the community that's just adjacent to you, Charleston Township, and also the community that's kind of next door to you, Ross Township. And we've been with those communities for many, many years. I think Ross Township, I think we be, we became their code-administrative entity back in the nineties. And, and then Charleston Township sometime in the two thousands, we became. And we've been there for that length of time. They're very, they've been very happy with us. We also, from the zoning administration portion of it, have unparalleled experience in that. We've been through rezoning. We've been through, I can't even tell you how many hundreds, special use permits, site plan reviews. And we provide those reviews as a staff report for each zoning board of appeals meeting and or planning commission meeting for those topics so that the planning commission members and or the zoning board of appeals members has a staff report to work from. Without those staff reports, they gotta be the expert in every single aspect of your zoning ordinance. But with a staff report, when there's the efficiencies in a site plan or something that we think that the planning commission ought to have a discussion about, and or the zoning board of appeals needs to know that, you know, and or the zoning board of appeals needs to know that, you know, possibly that there is something unique about this piece of property. They need to know about that in order to apply the standards in your zoning ordinance. So literally, and, and I wish I could give you a number, but hundreds of planning commission meetings and zoning board of appeals meetings, site plan reviews, rezonings. So, so none of this, for the zoning portion of it, would be new. State law in Michigan, the Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act are applicable in every single community. So the rules are all very, very similar. With, with some little small nuances from community to community. As far as inspections go, we too have a 24-hour inspection request line. And if the call comes in by 3:30 in the afternoon, that's when staff puts it all together and gets emails out to all of our inspectors, so they know what's on their schedule for the next day. It works very well. Each one of our inspectors has cell phones, our, our field inspection slips has all the data on it that's on the permit application. So if an inspector needs to make a phone call to a contractor, well, he doesn't even have to call our office to get the number, it's on his field inspection slip. Also on his field inspection slip is all the previous inspections that was done, not only for just his discipline, but every single aspect of that project. So if the building inspector goes out, he can look at a sheet and notice that, yeah, the electrical plumbing, the mechanical guy's already been here and he's, and it's been approved. So they have that ability right at their fingertips. Additionally, from a code enforcement standpoint or ordinance enforcement standpoint, we call it ordinance enforcement in our office. We, we use an authorization to enforce type form. The, we ask the unit of government, in this case, somebody would be designated in Galesburg to be the one to send us those authorization to enforces, enforce forms for any particular address that you deem needs a obstacle to take a look at. And so as an example, maybe somebody has, I don't know, I'll just throw something out there. Maybe somebody has junk cars. And you'd kind of like to see those junk cars, you know, gotten rid of. Well, you would send us over the authorization to enforce. We would go out, take and, take a look, and sure enough, there's an unlicensed vehicle, maybe it's not operable. And we would document what that is. We would get a notice out to them, giving them a certain length of time in which to get rid of that. If they didn't get rid of that, if they, the junk cars were still there when we went back out to take a look, we then would ask the city of Galesburg, what would you like us to do next? Because quite honestly, sometimes it's not necessarily a time to write a citation yet. Maybe there's some that somebody knows that we don't know. On the other hand, the city of Galesburg says, you know what? For the last five years in a row, we've had to deal with these, this particular property owner about junk cars. I kind of think it's a waste of time to send them another final notice, just issue them a ticket. So nobody knows your community better than you do. So we would, we would seek guidance from, from you before citations are actually issued. Once a citation is issued, typically it's going to be a municipal civil infraction, if that's how your ordinance reads. And typically, those are handled at the Crosstown Parkway Courthouse, where I have spent considerable amount of time because of these ordinance enforcement. And typically, it's in front of the magistrate as a, as, as, as a general rule. Every once in a while, you'll get one that needs to be turned into the type of municipal civil infraction that gets, actually gets in front of a judge. But I believe that you guys use Bakeman Sparks, and we've worked with them for a long, long time in different communities. And it's kind of routine. We sit in the file, we tell them what's wrong. Usually it's Roxanne Seaver, she fills out the compliance order, gets it over to the magistrate or the judge. And then when we get there, we just simply present our evidence. And then honestly, I've never been to one of them where the magistrate or the judge just doesn't sign the consent order, because it's sort of, I mean, it's, it's, how do you dispute photographs? How do you dispute the, the letters that you've sent? And, and so then at the end of the compliance period, if it's still not cleaned up now, now it would have to go to a formal hearing if it was an informal. If it was, if it was already a formal hearing, then they're in contempt of court. And then we would turn that back order Roxanne to move that one forward from there. But the, but the ordinance enforcement piece of, of, for what we do is, it's, it's really important. The single most valuable thing any unit of government has, including the city of Galesburg, is your tax base. Hands down, if you don't have a tax base, you can't provide any kind of services for your citizens. So allowing your housing stock to degrade low, down, lower and lower and lower kind of matches what happens to your tax base. It goes lower and lower and lower. So it's important to identify, and I heard you guys talking about this a little earlier, identify on how, on what you want to move forward with this, but then methodically, just move forward with it as, as planned, as, as you, as you create that plan. In my draft agreement, you'll, you'll see that I've, I've put in there for building, plumbing, mechanical, electrical code administration, zoning administration and code enforcement. Pretty common things. I, I wear lots of hats. I'm also a soil erosion and sedimentation person. Wasn't my perception that you guys needed any kind of service like that. But many of the communities that we take care of, we do that as well. So I, I guess I should stop talking, and surely you guys have some questions for me. So I'm open for questions.
Great, I'm gonna start, Bert. And one of the things that I, we've asked the previous presenter was attending planning and zoning meetings. And is that something that you would do on a regular basis or just per request?
Yeah, so some of the communities that we represent want us at every single one of their zoning board of appeals meetings and every single one of their planning commission meetings as a staff person, so that they have somebody that they can ask questions to. And so some of them want us to, every one of them. Others only want us to come when they invite us, because the more seasoned the board, the more, the more they know, I'll just say it that way, the more they know. And so if it's an easy site plan review, and you're going to get our staff report anyway, many times the planning commission doesn't necessarily need us. But we will, anytime that we're invited, we'll come. And if it's a standing invitation, we want you there every time, then yes, we would be there every time.
Good, thank you. I have one more quick question too on the building, on the, on the fees. Do you build in an opportunity for the city to receive some administrative overhead in the fee schedule? Or do you leave that to the city to determine? How does that work with your organization?
Yeah, so the proposal that I've given you does not have that in it for, for, for this reason. We leave that sort of blank, because some units of government would perceive that they might need 5% of the revenue. Other communities might perceive they need 10% of the revenue. Actually, I have one community that takes 20% of the revenue. So what we suggest is that try to, try to figure that out as, as, as a, as a council, as a, as your village, as your city council, you know what? Because I, like, like your other presenter, had no numbers to work from. I had no idea how many building, plumbing, mechanical and electrical permits that might have been issued over time in the city at all. So there was no way in which to even sort of do a projection to, to say, you know what? You guys probably, if you took 5%, that should cover your cost. There was no way for, for that calculation to be done. And you do have associated cost with this, by the way. Somebody's got to review the, review the bill. Somebody's, you know, got to be responsible to make sure that we're doing our job, right? Okay, so, so you do have, you do have some administrative costs that, that you should be able to recoup. As a general rule, you shouldn't incur any cost as it relates to building, plumbing, mechanical and electrical at all. Code enforcement, on the other hand, or ordinance enforcement, there's really no way to recoup your cost necessarily. I, I've had some communities, when there's a building, plumbing, mechanical or electrical permit associated with a ordinance enforcement or a code enforcement, they, they make a policy that we add the enforcement cost on their permit fees. So I do have a couple of communities that actually do that, so they can recoup some of their costs for that upfront, you know, stop work order that got placed or, or what have you. But other communities, they don't do that.
Okay, great. Council, any other questions for Mr. Gale?
I do. Mr. Gale, I, you've had tons of experience, it sounds like, and you suggested you had Charleston and our other community, Ross. What is your experience as far as a city's downtown buildings and code enforcement of maybe something like dangerous buildings or something like that? Do you have a lot of experience in that sort of thing?
I do, because we also do all of Ionia County, which encompasses the city of Ionia. So we've had lots of that kind of thing going on there. We do also Stockbridge, which has an awful lot of older downtown buildings in Stockbridge. City of Gobles, downtown buildings again. So we have, we have many communities where we have downtown areas. And I think you've sort of identified, and it's true, some of those downtown buildings are unique in themselves.
Great, that's great, thank you.
Okay, yeah, just so that we can get moving along here, we still have quite a bit to cover. I'm gonna wrap it up. Any other questions, council, for either of the presenters?
If you're on the phone, just remember to dial star six to mute, unmute yourself, so if you do.
Okay, very good. We appreciate you taking time to, both Associated Government Services and Safeville, taking time to give us your presentations this evening. I certainly feel like we have to have a little, a bit more discussion and a little bit more strategizing around how we initiate this process. Council, any thoughts on where you want to go from here with these two proposals at this time?
I think we have a lot of thinking to do and talking among ourselves. And I don't think it's, it's not a decision that we can make tonight, I don't believe.
I don't know anybody else. I would agree. I, I feel like we have a little bit more to, to figure out, so. Very good, okay. Again, thank you so much. And I'm sure City Manager Josie will be in touch with both of your organizations, probably with some more follow-up questions in the very near future. So thank you again. And with that, we will move then on to number eight, which is the consideration for well repair. John and Bill, thank you so much for being so patient with us. And on that, we do have the Northern Pump and Well quote with us, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you, Mr. Chrome.
Good evening, Mayor West, City Manager Josie and Council. What you have in front of you is a quote that came from late October. A question was raised on the validity of the, of the dollar figure on the quote. So Bill reached back out to Northern Pump right after the first of the year. You have a quote in hand that says they'll honor the prices provided back in October. I'm gonna let Bill take a couple of minutes to explain how we got to, to the point where we have this quote that we have to address tonight. And then I'll share some background dialogue between City Manager Josie, Bill and I to get to the point of the number that we're asking you to, to approve tonight.
Good evening, everybody. So what we have in front of us is, the way they, the way this comes to be found is, you know, every year, and some of you don't know, but we do well efficiency testing every year. What they do is they make graphs and charts that follows this pump curve. And when they see the pump curve start to drop off, it can be one of two things. It can be either a clog screen and/or a pump or both. This pump is operating at about, oh, somewhere's about a third or a little better than that efficiency right now. So what that tells them in some, in the, in the efficiency testing is that the pump hole is not doing its job, and it's not allowed to get the water through the screen because of the drawdown. Easy fix would be if it was just the screen. That's just a matter of cleaning, sanitizing and putting pump back in. But being the pump bowl assembly is not doing its job either. It creates an issue to where, like if you look in here on your list, you'll see a, a dollar amount of $2,856, about, oh, halfway down. What they will do is remove that bowl assembly and the stand pipes. They will hopefully be able to machine it. It's brass. Usually it can be machined and put back together, and it'll be like brand new. If it's wore out past the point of being able to be machined and, and repaired, we go to, down a little bit further, all the way to the left, you'll see an $8,506. So you'll take the $2,856 back out, and then it'll cost you for a brand new bowl assembly, the $8,506.
So companies like Northern Pump spend a lot of time with, with their historical experience trying to analyze what they can't see. You have to incur cost to pull a pump. Basically, with running pump curves for performance of a pump, it leads to scenarios that, that, that pump repair people have seen. And so if it falls in this percentage of efficient, it could be this or that. But you really don't know until you pull it out. And so we had the conversation with the city manager in regards to what's the worst-case scenario here? So you have a bottom line that's like $38,000. But a worst-case scenario would be somewhere around $42,000. And we talked about, all right, you to the point, what happens if a couple more $200 or $300 parts here and there? Being that it's city government, you need a dollar figure that's not to exceed. Instead, we can't pinpoint exact accuracy. So we use the same formula that we do in construction. That's a 10 to 15% contingency, because in the best efforts of all assumptions put together, you're still never going to hit that dollar pinpoint. And so at that point, emails went back and forth between the city manager, Bill and I, about worst-case scenario around 42 and a 15% contingency. Um, and a 15% contingency would put you right around $49,000 and, and some change. And it, it was my recommendation to, uh, City Manager Josie to put on the agenda a not-to-exceed $50,000 expense. Um, we believe that if, if something is found that's, that's gonna exceed that additional 15% contingency, then it's time to get additional quotes. Because at that point, you'll have the well pulled out. You'll have a better idea of what you're dealing with, um, up to and including potentially after we re-drill a well. But let's not go worse, worst, worst-case scenario there. Let's just deal with a repair on a well pump that is running very poor, uh, performance and efficiency at this point.
Just out of curiosity, how old is this pump well?
Um, if I took a stab at it, it's probably somewheres around, this was replaced in 2010, I think.
2010?
Yeah. I, I can get you that affirmed number because we have the, the well logbooks at the DPW.
Is this the oldest one?
This is actually the 1958 well. The other one's a 1948 well.
How's that one doing?
Good, good. That was the, that was the one that was rebuilt, oh, probably four or five years ago.
Okay, good.
Also, i- is this something that we then plan on replacing, uh, every 10 years or so?
These are built in your asset management plan for things like this, yes. And it's, it's so hard to put a number on, you know, um, what their lifespan is. Because it just, it just depends on, you know, how, how much water are we gonna pump this year? So it, a lot of those factors run into it. Um, I'm, I'm really hoping it's on the thing of it can be refurbished. Because this pump was, these bowl assemblies were brand new when they were put in, in, in 10 or whatever it was. So I'm, I'm, I feel comfortable saying that, but I don't wanna promise you that. Because usually they can be refurbished once or twice before you go to buying new assembly.
Quick question. What's, what's the pros and cons between refurbishing versus buying new? I mean, what kind of, what kind of warranty are we going to get here with a refurbished one versus a new one? Or is there any kind of a warranty involved? Cause I know you're saying it, it's hard to warranty something when it depends on use. But, you know, just kinda give me a ballpark figure if you could.
Honestly, Dale, I don't know about a warranty. Um, I would assume that if it's a manufactured, if, you know, if something happened and they took it apart and it was a manufactured defect, they're going to take care of this. I mean, Northern Pump's been around for a long, long time. Um.
Is that the same thing for a refurbished one? Uh, if they refurbish it, they're gonna guarantee it for, you know, a couple of years or something like that?
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, it appears we really don't have a choice. So you're basically asking us to...
The unfortunate part about this is, is right now, with the way it's operating, at the efficiency level it's operating at, it's actually costing you money generating water because it's a longer runtime for it to do what it needs to do.
Okay. Okay, so basically, when you figure in the contingency, um, you would like, uh, an authorization for up to 50,000, not to exceed $50,000 and then you'll report back with the actual cost, of course.
Right.
Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah. Yeah, cause it could be, I mean, if they had to replace a certain piece of stand pipe that they didn't think about doing, because this is an eight-inch well, so it's fairly big pipe. Um, or anything like that, that just give, it, it, it gives them the green light to keep going, but not to exceed a, a huge dollar amount like that.
Right, well, and if it's costing us money, we, we just need to move forward with that. Um, Counsel, do you have any other questions or discussions, uh, discussion on this? Um, floor would certainly be open for a motion to, uh, grant a $50,000, not to exceed $50,000 allotment for this wellhead.
Well, it's gotta be done. So I'm gonna make a motion that we accept this Northern Pump and Well, uh, proposal not to exceed 50,000 for the number two pump and well work.
We have support for the motion.
I'll second it.
Great. Do we have any other discussion or questions for Bill or John before? If not, we'll go ahead and, um, ask Clerk Goodsell to roll call.
Dale?
Yes.
Wardinger?
Yes.
Marble?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Lemon?
Uh, Judy, if you need to unmute yourself, it's, uh, star six on your phone.
I'll move on. Rodriguez?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Lemon? That's six out of seven that have responded.
Okay. All righty, motion carries. Thank you.
Lori, who are you gonna want to sign this proposal?
Um, Counsel has approved. City Manager has authorities to sign with Counsel approval. Thank you.
Did that newest copy to you? Did I, sir, did I email that through to you?
Sorry, say that again, Bill?
Did I email that newest dated one to you? The one...
Did I have it's 10/28. Do you have a more recent one?
Yes, I have one that's 1/7. I, I thought I sent that through to you, but I'll send it again.
I got it right now. And then Sarah, you get a signature on it tomorrow. I'm sorry. City Manager Josie, you get a signature on it tomorrow. Um, and we will pursue getting this repair done in a timely fashion.
Send it over tonight. You'll have it back tonight.
Got it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for being patient with us. Okay, very good. We'll be moving then on to, uh, Planning Commission Appointment Number Nine. Um, for Section 5417, uh, Mayor appoints to Planning Commission with Counsel approval. Uh, I would like to nominate, uh, Trustee Linda Marble to be the ex officio liaison to planning and zoning. Floor would be open for a motion to appoint Linda Marble ex officio to planning, planning and zoning.
Okay, go ahead. I don't wanna, I don't wanna take anybody's thunder here.
No, it's okay. I motion Linda Marble for ex officio, the, the, of Parks and, Parks and Zoning? Yeah?
Planning and zoning.
Thank you.
And I second it.
Very good. We have motion and support. Um, please roll call Clerk Goodsell.
Wardinger?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Becky?
Yeah.
Lemon? Rodriguez?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Marble?
Yes.
And Judy Lemon. Judy, star six to unmute yourself.
Uh, it looks like she left. One second, I have to, I think she's calling me.
Okay. That's six out of seven responding.
Thank you. Um, very good. We're going to move on to 10 Public Hearing for the Burning Ordinance. This is the second read in public hearings, so we can take action on this, uh, this evening, correct, Clerk Goodsell?
Yes, you'll need a motion to open the public hearing and close the public hearing, then vote on the ordinance adoption.
Thank you. Floor would be open for a motion to move into public hearing for ordinance 276 Burning.
I will make a motion to enter into public hearing, uh, in regard to ordinance number 276.
We have a motion to support, please.
I support.
We have a motion to support. All in favor of moving to public hearing, aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I think I heard somebody opposed, but I didn't hear who it was.
Please roll call then Clerk Goodsell.
Okay. West?
Yes.
Wardinger?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Marble? Marble?
Uh...
Yes.
Okay, um, Dale?
Yes.
And Lemon?
She'll be back in a second. She just called me.
Okay. So the public hearing is open.
So we are now in public hearing for ordinance number 276. Um, there were a couple of changes on this ordinance we asked to have changed last month. One is that the bottom township needs to be changed to city.
Yes, that has been done.
Okay, very good. That's not on my copy, so.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. Thank you.
Hello?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Am I in?
Yep.
Okay, I would like... Hello?
Uh, yep.
I would like to know if we could back up on the nomination for planning. Back on September 15th, 2011, we got a mandate from the state of Michigan that we had to...
Trustee, Trustee Lemon, I'm quite a, a, a point of order. We're in public hearing for, uh, the Burning Ordinance 276. So we must stay in public hearing at this point.
Thank you.
So we are in public hearing for any sort of conti- uh, input on the burning or, ordinance 276. Would anyone, uh, like to address Counsel specific to this ordinance? Or does Counsel have any other discussion, concerns or clarities on ordinance 276? Very good. If there's no further public comment or comment, floor would be open for a motion to move out of public hearing.
I make a motion to move out of public hearing.
A second.
We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Very good. Floor would now be open for a motion to adopt the final reading of ordinance 276.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 276, which is an ordinance to replace chapter 30 City Fire and Safety Code, Article Two, Sections 3035, 30 through 36 and 30 through 37.
Do we have support?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who made that motion? Or the supported the motion. Okay, thank you, Angelina.
Yes.
Very good. And, uh, Clerk Goodsell, if you'd roll call please. Thank you.
Sure. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Wardinger?
Yes.
Marble?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Very good. Ordinance PSS. Uh, okay, let's go then to consideration of fire equipment purchases. Number 11. And this is the, uh, consideration for purchase of the breathing equipment. Is there an updated, update on the actual incurred cost of this equipment? Um, either Clerk Goodsell or Dale, uh, the ex officio liaison.
They did mention at the meeting that we had on the, on the 20th that our share was now going to be $30,000. And, and Sarah, I think they did mention that to you also while you were in there. Um, I have not seen anything from Kevin to change that. And I don't know if he sent you anything, but, uh, they, he did say that our share, they did some refiguring on their accounts and everything else, that our share would be $30,000.
That is the same conversation that I had with Chief Rumsberg. And Charleston Township has already paid the $30,000 for that purchase.
So that's a significant difference in, uh, you know, the 53 and the talking about financing. Uh, Clerk Goodsell, did we have about 53 or four in that fund? So if we did just write a check directly for the 30,000, the fund would still have over 20,000 in it?
Yes, um, I spoke with, um, Plant Moran, I can't remember his name right now.
Brian.
Brian, Brian Camiller. And we have 53 in, um, a fund balance this year with the, um, we collected 25,000. We can continue to collect that millage next year. That will be the last time that we can collect it. So that will be another 25, giving us about 103,000 by the end of next fiscal year. So we're in a good, solid position in the Public Safety Fund.
And that is if, after a $30,000 expenditure?
No, it'd be $73,000 after the $30, $30,000 expenditure.
Very good, thank you. So Counsel, do you have any, uh, further discussion? I know we had a really good in-service from Chief Rumsberger last month about this. Um, I think we all agreed that we needed to make the purchase. We waited to see specifically a, a little bit more about the actual finances of this equipment. Um, do you have any other questions or discussion on this issue? Um, if not, uh, certainly, let's just go ahead and, um, approve the expenditure. I, I think that we're just paying for it as opposed to financing it unless, um, you know, our treasurer clerk feel that that is not, uh, in the best interest of the city. I think I just need to be clear.
That, I would like to affirm everyone's choice to look into it further, to find those funds and that exploratory, that moment that everyone took to look into it was very helpful. And, uh, so thank you to everyone that looked into that to clarify and find those extra funds.
Any discussion, any other comments? Uh, floor would be open for a motion to pay directly, um, for the cost of the equipment.
This is Carol. I'll make a motion to, uh, pay for the fire department equipment. At a cost of $30, or $30, yeah, $30,000.
Thank you, Trustee Wardinger. Do we have support?
Second, ma'am.
Uh, Clerk Goodsell, is a flat $30,000, uh, okay? Or do we need a little flexibility here?
I think maybe a little flexibility for the final accounting. Probably would be a good idea, so we don't have to come back to Counsel. Should it go to like 32 or something like that?
Okay, I can change it. Yep, I will change it to, to 32.
Carol, do you wanna make that not to exceed 32?
Not to exceed 32.
Okay, thank you.
I'll still support it.
Very good. If there's, if there's any other discussion, now would be the time. Otherwise, uh, Clerk Goodsell, if you would roll call the vote, that would be good. Thank you.
Marble?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Wardinger?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Very good. Um, Trustee Harmon, perhaps you can report to Chief Rumsberg that he should be ready to go.
Yes.
Very good, thank you, all right. Let's move on to 12, consideration proposal from municipal code to host ordinances online. Anna, do you have any, anything to add to this proposal?
No, I think what trustee, or trustee Marble has done has been a tremendous help to keep the ordinances as current as they possibly could be without being codified. No ordinance had been codified since 2008. No, I'm sorry, 2003. So we got them current to 2008. 2008 to 2020 are there be at municipal code being codified right now. But for $285 a year, they would place a link on our website and people could go directly to municipal code and view the codified ordinances, which would delete any portions that had been repealed by a newly adopted ordinance. Giving them a more complete picture.
Okay. If we get done with all this codification, are we going to have a hard copy?
Yes, you will, everybody will receive an updated book. And if anybody has a book currently, I would ask they bring it to the office so I can, as soon as there's printed copies come in, I could get your book current because they're woefully out of date, they're very far behind.
Okay.
I just want to, I want to ask something, and I know this over the past years when I was working on the ordinances and I went to different municipalities, I would go into the municipality and click on ordinance and it would take me directly to municipal code. I think this is a great idea. However, I don't know what your feelings are about. I noticed a lot of municipalities did not include the zoning ordinance as a part of their code of ordinances, they kept the zoning ordinance on their own website. And I'm wondering, because of so many people that are going to be referring to this, zoning administrator, code enforcement, planning and zoning has been doing, working hard on amending it, if that should be part of the municipal code ordinance, code of ordinances.
The way the city has their ordinances written, the zoning ordinance is part of the total code of ordinance. It is a chapter, it is not a total separate ordinance. So when they publish and have a link, they will see the entire ordinance from parking to zoning to building, everything will be there.
Right, I just didn't know how difficult it would be for, as I said, you know, you, your code enforcement, they need to know the zoning ordinances as does zoning administrators.
Yes.
And there's so much, it's so out of date, there's so many amendments that need to be made to it. I just, I hate for it even to be up. But that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be.
Well, we have to follow what's written as our ordinance. And yes, it needs to be updated, but it's what we have right now until those updates can occur.
Yeah, I just have a question, is like the website person. Would, would it be possible, do you have to legally have this on the municipal code site? Just out of curiosity?
I would have to have that conversation with them.
Okay.
I think it, I don't know, don't know the answer to your question Travis, but I can find that out.
If it's $285, I'm sure that we can put it on our website locally instead of on this, I'm not sure if that helps at all, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure who holds the proprietary digital files if we do or if they do.
Okay.
So I need to clarify that with them.
I know that going through municipal code on all the different municipalities I have checked, there are tons and tons of cities, villages, and townships that are on municipal code. And it's so nice just to go to that one municipal code and you can look at all the different municipalities ordinances. And I think, I think that's a great idea for myself personally.
This would have been it. But, but we're good, okay, we're great.
All right. I, I agree, trustee Marble, I love municipal code, it's out there. And $285 a year for them to host it, I think is pretty darn reasonable. I'd like to see it on the city site as well, but I think that municipal code is definitely there, especially when we're looking at the timber builders and inspectors and so. Any other questions or discussions on this proposal from municipal council? Okay, floor would certainly be open for a motion to move forward with having municipal code host municipal code website.
Well, I'd like to make a motion for the city to place, place the ordinances on the municipal code's website for $285 a year.
I second it.
The motion is support. Any other discussion, counsel? Questions, concerns? Very good, Clerk Goodsell, money is involved, so if you'd roll call that.
Wardinger?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Marble?
Yes.
West?
Yes. Very good, we're going to go now to consideration to repair backhoe. You should have a service quote from Carlton Equipment Company. Supervisor Reins, I'm going to hand this one over to you.
Um, our backhoe, this quote is for two different items. One is for the annual service.
Of the backhoe.
That is the if you look on your at the bottom of your first page, going on to the top of the second page, there's a quote for $1,400. That is for the service of the backhoe annually. The, at the top of your first page, there's a quote for $817. On the back of the backhoe, there is a window that goes up and down. There are seals that are in the window, those seals have worn out. They do need replaced, so that is what that quote is for. And then on the bottom of page two, there is a quote for $780. That is to repair the headlights on it. There are headlights all the way around the top of it. They are old and halogen lights. We have replaced them multiple times and they keep blowing. We're not quite sure why. So this quote is to repair those with LEDs and fix all of the gremlins and the wiring on them. The total quote for the whole thing, for them to come here and do all of this is $3,088.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Supervisor Reins on the request for repairs to the backhoe? Any discussion? Floor would certainly be open for a motion to repair the backhoe for $3,800, or I'm sorry, $3,888.96.
I'll make a motion to repair the backhoe for, what was it again?
3. 388.
388.96.
Thank you, trustee Wardinger, do we have support?
I'll support that.
Thank you, trustee Lemon. Any other discussion or questions for Supervisor Reins on this bid? Very good, Clerk Goodsell, would you roll call please?
Yes, Marble?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Wardinger?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. All right, we're going to go to 15, consideration, a quote for concrete repair. And I believe I'm going to throw that back to Josh.
Okay, so I can't remember the actual date. Like Ben, if you would like to, but we had a water main break behind the bakery. We had to tear out some concrete that belongs to the Galesburg Meat Locker. This quote is to replace the concrete that we damaged during this process. On that quote, there is two figures, I guess, inside of it, there is one for 7,500, that is our cost. They also, the property owner actually also reached out and asked if we could have their, it's like a sidewalk area type pad, and he wants to replace the whole pad. So the $1,200 is the cost that they would incur to have the contractor just tear everything out and redo the whole pad. So we are only responsible for these $7,500.
So what, what you're saying is they want to add on, they just want to do the whole thing, so that adds that cost, so.
So the entire project is the cost of 85, 8700. But we are only paying the 7,000, whatever it was, for our portion that we damaged.
Okay, surely we would have some sort of agreement in writing before we entered into something like this. And I would leave that certainly to city managers, I'd hate to have the whole thing paid and then have something happen, so. And then when does this happen? We can't work with the concrete right now, is that it? It would.
No, it, it will probably end up being like early spring when it gets repaired.
And then quick question, right in that same area, you know, Consumers was back there, right by the building there on Mill that brown building on the corner, and they tore that up and there's just a nice old, big old lump of asphalt there now, it looks terrible. Will they come back in the spring and fix that?
That was a gas leak about two weeks ago, so. Typically, I believe on the last one that they did, I think it was about a month turnaround on the repair. So it'll be early spring when it gets repaired, I'm sure.
Is that Consumers, and they come back and repair it, we don't have to repair that in the spring?
No, no, no.
They do.
All consumers.
Perfect, okay, thank you. All right, so on this, we have no choice but to replace the concrete because we had a water main break. Counsel, any questions, concerns about this quote?
This may be a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyways. Is our cost, if Galesburg Meat Locker wasn't involved at all, and therefore our cost will be 7,500?
Yes, yep, that whole area back there is kind of a, it's busted up concrete and it's just kind of a mess back there for ground. So basically, we, Bill and I just kind of walked it out to, you know, a nice, a square area to replace at the, you know, the easiest way of replacing the concrete for us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, counsel, if you have no other questions, concerns, floor would certainly be open for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead Judy.
I make a motion that we pay the bid for $7,500 for the concrete repair.
And I will second that.
Thank you, trustee Lemon and trustee Marble. Any other discussion, questions? If not, Clerk Goodsell, would you roll call vote, please?
Wardinger?
Yes.
Marble?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start with concrete, Josh. All right, we're going to move to agenda item 15, addition to the agenda. This is a reworking of the DDA ordinance. In 2018, Public Act 57, the recodification of the tax increment financing law in the state of Michigan was recodified. Therefore, we needed to update our economic development DDA ordinance to reflect the new public act. This is the first reading of that change to reflect the new public act in the ordinance. Any questions?
Yeah, wait a minute. This is the DDA ordinance?
Yes ma'am.
And is for what?
The DDA.
I'm putting ordinances?
The public, the public act, the first DDA was formed under, has been recodified in 2018 for a 1-1 2019 start date. The city has neglected to update the ordinance for two years.
Okay. Well, is this about the same as the ordinance? Because I don't think I've got a copy of the DDA ordinance. Of course, not being on the board when that was done.
This, what this does is it takes out the old Public Act 157. It puts in the new public act, the recodification, which we're legally obligated to do. Also puts a little bit of new language of the new public act in for specific accountability purposes.
And the, the original DDA ordinance that's in existence right now is in our code of ordinances on our website at this.
Yeah, like I can get that.
And in the Brown ordinance book.
I'm sure what, the office I'm sure would be happy to make a copy for you of that ordinance.
Okay, I need to see that before I do anything with this.
This is just the first reading of the ordinance.
I know.
Does counsel have any other questions on this ordinance? Any concerns in the drafting? It has been through legal already.
So will we need now to set a public hearing for next month? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other discussion? Very good. What is the date of our March meeting?
March 1st.
March 1st, boy, we're hitting the first, all righty. Do we need a motion for that, Clerk Goodsell, public hearing?
Yes, you need to approve it for first reading and set the public hearing date for whatever date you're choosing.
Very good, so we need a motion to approve for first reading with a public hearing of March 1st, 2021. Floor would be open for such motion. Floor would be open for such motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance 247 for the purpose of compliance of Public Act 57 and set it for public hearing on March 1st, 2021.
Thank you, Trustee Marble. Do we have support for the motion?
I support.
We have motion and support.
Anna, will you be giving this ordinance number?
Yes. I believe it's, we just adopted 276. This would be 277. I will have to confirm that, but I think that's the sequence we're in right now.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and support on the floor. Do we need to roll call this, Clerk Goodsell, for public hearing?
I, I think probably we should.
Very good, thank you.
Becky?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Wardinger?
Yes.
Marble?
Yes.
And anybody who does not have a copy of the existing ordinance, I'd be happy to provide that to you. And for Carol and Judy, I will print those, and you can pick those up tomorrow.
I have a copy of that ordinance that we just discussed. Yes, I've got that copy.
Okay.
I might have some somewhere in the last three years, but I don't know where it's at.
Well, I can just print one, then you will have it.
Yeah, some more paper.
Very good. Okay, we'll be moving along to the DPW report now. Josh, we'll hand it over to you.
Couple of the... We've had been plowing, that's been going pretty good. Had a couple of burials up at the cemetery. These burials were our first ones. They went fairly well for our... I have been working with our insurance company for the claim on the collapsed vault. They are supposed to call back or reach out any day now. So, we're just on that. The X mark mower that we used to pull all of our parts, it needs, it's not broken, but it needs to go to steam sma. It is leaking a lot of oil, just kind of needs a refresh and, you know, just kind of a maintenance to go through. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, I believe that mower is three years old now. So, it's about time, you know, just to kind of, to refresh it up. I'm not sure of a price on it, so I wanted to kind of bring it up here at the board meeting, you know, to kind of talk about it, kind of get the approval to send it in first. And then, another thing that we need to discuss is our old salt spreader insert from the old plow truck. The Village of Augusta has called and reached out and are interested in purchasing that.
So, they want to purchase our old spreader?
Yes, apparently, they have bought, they have purchased a new plow truck. And I talked to Bud about two weeks ago, and he said that they were interested. I have looked out to the people who rehabbed our truck, and they're not professionals in used equipment or anything, but their recommendation for a fair price was anywhere between $3,000 to $5,000. Compared, or depending on the condition of the box itself.
Okay, that's great.
Kind of wanted to bring it up here to kind of get you guys on board and see what you guys wanted out of that box. I know that they are interested, so it's, I kind of wanted to get a ballpark price of what you guys want out of it, so we know what's coming.
I think we just referred to you and City Manager Joshi should be able to find a fair market value and sell it to them for, you know, fair market value. They're our neighbor. I'd love to give it to them, but we can't give things away. So, if Augusta needs it, let's do our best to get it to them for a fair market value. And you and City Manager Joshi should be fine with that. The lawnmower, the earmark mower. So, in the SIP plan that you're developing, you'll have maintenance schedules so that we'll be able to track all of that and budget accordingly. So, do you have a maintenance history on that, then, Josh?
I do not have, I have some, some minor, let me pull it up on my computer here. Bill kind of kept a spreadsheet here of what has been done to it. I don't believe anything major has been done to it. Just kind of bearings and wheels and, you know, little things to keep it running. This mower, hold on one second, let me pull this up here. I believe this mower is three years old now, maybe four. If I can find it.
Well, it makes sense that it needs to be maintained.
It's just, it's just at the point now to where we, I mean, we, we had a rough year this year with it. I mean, it was mode and mode and mode. So, it's just time to refresh the baskets and go over everything, you know, just to, to make sure that we keep up on the, on the maintenance of it. I bring it up because I noticed that it is leaking oil. So, it does have an oil leak on it that I would like to get fixed. And we'll just kind of let them see what else is wrong with it. I know that Brad has been kind of working on wheels and bearings on it and that kind of stuff. So, most of it's all done, but the, the engine work I would prefer to, to send out.
Well, I am a big fan of keeping equipment maintained because I think in the long run, the city will save money by having constant maintenance rather than letting it just go and not doing anything and then it just breaking and not being worth anything. So, I'm in big favor of service maintenance on that.
Council, any other questions? City Manager, or I'm sorry, Supervisor Rains, do you have anything that you'd like to highlight on here? Heads up, come and add us. Any other discussion?
Nope, I believe that's about it. We're on, I think I've covered all of the... Figure item.
Okay. Any questions for Josh, Council? Thank you very much for your work and your reporting. We appreciate it. I think you need to just go ahead and get the lawnmower maintained and...
Yeah, I will get that in here in the next couple of weeks or so.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, we're closing in on it, folks. Let's go to standing reports. We've made this part of the agenda. If you have an ex officio or liaison position, just give us a, you know, an update. If you've attended a meeting, highlights, heads up, that sort of thing. I appreciate the packet from the fireboard meeting, very informative. So, we're just going to have this standing. If you haven't had a meeting with your particular assigned committee and you have nothing to share, that's fine, but that is going to be a standing agenda item. So, we'll just start right out. Dale, you had a fireboard meeting you participated in?
Yeah, we had a fireboard meeting on the 20th, and it was a kind of a meet and greet, get to know each other, talk with Kevin. You know, he provided us with this, this budget and the budget for next year and everything. He did mention that they now have a fire truck that's going, that they can no longer get parts for. So, somewhere in the future, they are going to be looking at a new purchase of a fire truck. I asked if I could get together after this COVID allowed us to kind of meet at the coffee shop or something like that, to go over the budget with him. And again, this is just an education process for me, so I understand the budget, what he's looking at and where he's going and everything. I'm very appreciative that they're getting the help and they're getting a voice in the council. So, hopefully, sometime later this month, the next meeting is scheduled for the February 17th. Hopefully, I may look in before then or even maybe after the meeting and get educated on their budget. And I did ask him if he could consider a five-year plan for expenditure so we don't get a big surprise, especially with their thinking about a new fire truck, which I guess can run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, we certainly want to know that that expense is coming down rather than budgeted for. So, other than that, it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am the liaison to the NUCI, which did not meet last month. Planning and zoning does not have a quorum. They have not met.
I would like to update you on planning and zoning. At the time, we were basically shut down. We had a parking ordinance that was waiting to be accepted by the city commission, and we were getting ready to send that up to you guys. We also had signage that was going to go up to accompany the parking area. I guess that got lost, by the way. I have one member left. Dee Conklin would like to continue on planning and zoning. I'm hoping that the new ordinance, number 276, unlawful continuance of fire hazard, will address the seven-acre wooden brush dump on partial 07-13-451-010 at the west end of Washington Street. There has been recent burning there prior to 1/24/21.
Parks and Rec, I don't believe Parks and Rec has met. Although, I did have a small discussion with the trustee Rodriguez about doing some exploration around some park, rec, arts and culture. And Personnel has met, I'm sorry, did not meet in the month of, did we meet in January? Personnel is meeting February 10th to continue to discuss some of the challenges that we have as we put together a new handbook. I also want to share that we will be establishing, I think, will also have a standing committee around the Michigan Economic Development Redevelopment Ready Communities. Myself, I believe, Trustee Marble and City Manager Joshi, we're part of a webinar as MADC, RRC is kicking off at 2.0. It's a kind of more pointed, focused detail and assistance, breaking out the redevelopment ready program into two opportunities for communities. And we're very excited about moving forward with that. And that will be happening rather quickly. We are fully enrolled and fully engaged. And so, we will have standing committee reports on that as well. Any other comments or input from any other committees or anyone that I missed?
Yeah, you didn't miss the fireboard, but I always turned in. And I don't know where it went, but it never got on the agenda. And I know that, oh, Kenny Carpenter, or Kenny, whatever his last name was, he always had a report that he turned in, too. And for some reason, it hasn't been on anything for a long time.
If I remember correctly, we had all those reports, all those reports up in the consent agenda. And because they became so numerous, if I remember correctly, we decided to keep those reports in the office so anybody wanting to see them could, but we weren't going to have them on the...
I can't, you know, I, I don't know why they didn't put them in because, like I say, Kenny and I always give them the reports, but I thought, well, what the heck?
Trustee Marble, they would still be listed in the consent agenda just on view in the office, so they'd still be listed.
Yeah. Well, that's, I wanted to tell you why, you know, it was given to the front office, but...
Carol, I think the transition between Karen and myself was...
Oh, it was before that, Anna.
Okay, I would say lack of knowledge on my part, so...
No, it wasn't, it wasn't true. It was just that hadn't been done.
Okay.
Great.
So, okay.
Thank you. All right, with that...
So, we still have to, we have one person on the Parks and Rec, is that correct, Lori?
I would have to go, I would have to look at the listing. I believe there's one person along with you.
Sean, in charge of Parks and Rec, the city of Kalamazoo spoke with me today, and he wanted to collaborate on a project. I haven't spoken with him because we have to arrange a meeting, but he wanted to collaborate on something to do with Parks and Rec. So, we look forward to talking about that.
Great, that'll be great to hear about. Thank you. Okay.
I think Kenny Kissinger's on it.
Okay, that brings us to Councilmember comment. Instead of calling on each council member, I'm certainly just going to, I'm just going to allow the council members who have comment to go ahead respectfully and utilize your time. So, if you have a comment, please go ahead.
Yeah, I have one.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Last month's meeting, I wasn't there. I didn't have the right numbers to be there. I don't think I should be counted absent, or I should be counted as absent, you know, that people knew that I wasn't there because I don't think I should be, you know, I had permission to be absent, I guess, because nobody gave me the right numbers. It's like I didn't try. So...
I'll just comment, this is Travis. I'm not really sure what the issue was. Everybody had access, so I'm, I logged in. I said, Anna, the correct information, so I'm not sure what the...
Well, if I don't have that stuff, I only have a telephone, I don't get that stuff.
Gotcha.
Got me.
No, no, no. I just wanted to...
I got the packet in the morning and went home, and at quarter two, I started calling at 8:30, and I decided where they could put it. So, that was that.
Very good. Any other comments, Council?
I just wanted to apologize. Amongst my eight different devices, apparently, my Wi-Fi didn't want to communicate, so I was late to the meeting tonight as well. But I wanted to thank City Manager Joshi for taking some time to sit with me today. And between the times she could have gone home before the meeting to sit and talk through budgeting with me and different aspects that I had questions about since I'm a newbie. So, thank you, City Manager Joshi. I was speaking with different commissioners from Kalamazoo today, and they were giving me their insights and things they wish they had known and the questions they wish they had asked and different things. So, I was getting a lot of support from different city commissioners, and City Manager Joshi really supported. So, thank you so much.
It's great to have you on our team. Okay, very good. If there is no other council discussion, floor would certainly be open. It's great to have you on our team. Okay, very good. If there is no other council discussion, floor would certainly be open for a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there support?
I support.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you so much for your time and your support, all of you. I believe that Travis would like us all to be in, logged on and ready ten, ten minutes before the next meeting, so if, so, so, you know, you can log on at like 5:30 or Carol, I think I saw you on, your phone registered at like 5:35. So the sooner you can get on, the better you're, the better we're going to be able to troubleshoot some of that stuff, but I do want to say that yes, the COVID numbers are down and yes, I'm very excited that the office is comfortable having public in the little alcove one at a time. But given that the numbers are still double what they were in April and the new variants that are coming that are here, we will continue to meet virtually for some time, so please get your technica, technologies in order. This will be the form of meeting for quite some time. So on that note, have a great evening and thanks all for your work.
Good night, everybody.